I can see where they parked their trucks here, but it absolutely fills the lot. And I'm getting pretty comfortable walking down around it and the picture of the lot.
I'm surprised you guys.
Any of you guys need packets? You got it?
Do you have an agenda?
You've got an agenda? I've got your own personal agenda.
Good, Bob, how are you? Hey, if you have the...
There's Taylor. What I'm doing, I... I have two gooseberry cushions and so far I have six.
When you're listing people attending, put the alternates up with the...
So I've moved at the six, I've been tearing it up.
But that one...
I've got one.
You got one?
I've got one, but...
No, put them up, they are...
I could not have fertilized it.
And we'll take care of purpose by saying... Sorry, we're gonna do it by saying this is... Like if there are alternates seated, we'll say who is actually there.
I think...
Who's voting?
But leave everybody out there.
Are you gonna be in the office?
Yes. They're not... Yes, this one. I wanted to get you that before you started.
No. I'm gonna shower.
She doesn't want to be associated with that decision, and she isn't because she wasn't seated. Right.
Well, you could, I did pause, and I put them in cakes like blueberry cocoa, I put gooseberries.
Yep. Line 13, guests, Seeley and Bob, should be moved up to your line six. And just like you put chair after me and vice chair after Susan, which is alternate after each of them.
That they, um... Was... If they go too hard, they get squishy, so you can put them on it.
They're always alternates?
They're right.
So they always go up in that line as an alternate? They don't change the whole board member.
But he's newer, right?
Oh. The point is... Yes. You had...
All right, here, Rob. I have the... Labor work?
Thank you, ma'am.
And then I made freezer cushions today, because I got to go to the farmer's farm.
Good way to get to bite into these those for living. Okay, we're about two minutes past seven. Anybody have a reason we should wait longer? We can wait longer, we just can't start early.
Sorry, I'm late.
Um, the two, uh...
It's all right.
Taylor Daly's not here.
Who?
Taylor.
Their representative.
Their representative's here. Yep. Mr. Sandball. I enjoyed reading your application. I did. One page, clear, sync, and point.
Thanks.
We're gonna do the minutes after these two hearings. Nothing in the minutes bears on these hearings, so we don't need to approve them beforehand. Let's see, anybody here not know what we're doing? You guys haven't been here before. Have you been to ZBDA before? Okay, do you know what a ZBDA does? I'll tell you very briefly. There is the zoning ordinance for a town or a city, and then there is reality. And sometimes, sometimes, they don't fit. Sometimes zoning ordinance, without any particular good reason, restricts a property owner from doing something with their property that wouldn't benefit the town for the purposes of the zoning ordinance was made, right? You know, we have reasons for setting against zoning ordinance. So zoning board adjustment is here to examine those cases and provide relief, if we can. We can do it with a variance. We can do it with a special exception, there's some other things we do too. It's important to remember, to note, that we are not changing the zoning ordinance, and that we evaluate the hearing for the land, not for the people on the land. So if somebody comes and says, "There should be a variance for this land," that's what we evaluate. Okay.
And you should say the variance goes with the land.
That's true.
The property's solid.
Right.
So it's not temporary?
Not temporary. We have one, two, three, four, five permanent members. We have one alternate president if we need him. So if one of us needs to recuse for some reason, we can see Mr. Cusick as our alternate. We are missing this Ophiero, who was our other alternate. And I'm babbling all this for the recording, Whitney will have it in our minutes. I think our first hearing is gonna be the Martins, Paul St. Martin. And I'm gonna ask my administrator to read the public notice. And you can come on up and... You can either stand up there if you like, so you can talk to everybody, or you can sit. It's up to you.
I can stand up here if you want.
This is land use case Z24.
2024-07-01?
Yes, I just let... Seeley is now gonna be joining us remotely here. So land use case Z24-07-01. Paul St. Martin is seeking variance relief from infield zoning ordinance Article 4, Section 401, dot 1, paragraphs L and M, to construct a deck and retaining wall within the prescribed setbacks to Massa Comal Lake and a side lot line. Subject parcel is .16 acres and is located at 49 in Hancer Route 4A, Tax Map 18, Lot 37, in the R1 Residential Zoning District. Subject parcel is owned by Paul St. Martin, Sr., leader Paul.
Before you start, let me ask. I think we don't have anything to say about the parking area. I think this is entirely about a dock or a deck. Do you think that's true?
Structure, I think it's a combination of the ones placed... Seeley, use your mic, please.
My mic?
We got you. So if it's natural material, rock, dirt, no problem. But because he is talking about other material, it does qualify as a structure.
But there's this, this thing on this picture.
All the landscaping timbers. Okay, so I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I knew what we have jurisdiction over.
Can I ask something?
Let's let the man give his presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Yeah, the, uh, I went over what we're trying to, what I'm trying to do. I know the retaining wall, as you can probably see from that picture there, the pictures, it's failing. So the idea is to replace the timber blocks, blocks, cement blocks, with geocoding to reinforce it, pull it back in so it doesn't fail, because that's what's happening right now, that wall is failing. And then what I'd like to do for the lakeside is that wall that you have in the picture faces the lake, right? So I'm trying to make it so it's not as visibly intrusive, maybe. So I'm gonna have a slope, 45-degree slope, filled with a grid and filled with natural vegetation. And then I'll put the runoff to water, because I know, like, with a town, and same for the deck, it's the wrong, right, now that it runs the cyo bacteria that we just had morning. It's kind of to help with that. I'm trying to do some of my work already to kind of be a good steward to the lake, you know, putting some rock in and some places where it runs off. But with, like, the deck, I think it was like what benefit, I think, with the water runoff is, and I said that in my application. I have one roof that runs off onto another roof. And that time when it gets heavy rain, basically just comes streaming right off that roof and runs into the lake. So what I think would be a good idea, what's a proposal, is putting the deck out there. So when water runs off, it hits the deck and kind of disperses that water, so it's not a stream. And underneath that deck, I put rock to help with that, bringing it into the ground.
I always go and look. I don't talk to people, but I park and I look. And that is a tiny, tiny lot.
Yeah, it's...
And do you have a picture of the whole thing from the lake?
I don't have.
Because I looked over the edge and it looked like there was some kind of a deck down there on the corner.
I don't have one from the, uh, from the lakeside. What it is, is like that house, one thing that's nice about that house, it's not, it's actually a double lot.
That's a double lot?
That's a double lot. Yeah, because like where the house was built, the original house, they got an addition to put, like, where my kitchen is. That would've been, normally if it was another house, there would've been another, you know, farther apartment where my current house is. But they just, they had two lots, it's actually just two lots.
That's two lots. So this is the, this is the edge of the parking area, right?
Yeah, so that one corner there, and one that kind of faces, uh, I guess, would be north, is on the, on the edge of the...
I brought the tax map up.
So this parking, this, there's, this is one edge here, and this is, uh, the front of it. And it's the other edge here.
Yeah.
This is right on the property line, this piece right here. And so, you know, the idea is to increase this, but also increase it by putting a slope in it.
Yeah, when I came to look, I parked next door on their parking area, because I looked at it and I thought, wow.
So that is, that's, that's this?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
That picture, that, you have the...
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, there's two pictures there.
And that is the, where it's falling apart, that's next to the house?
No, so the, there's two, uh, one right here I think you're looking at. That's the front, that's the front of it, and the other one's on the side.
That's the front of it? That faces...
And this face of the house.
That faces the house and that faces the lake.
So those are the, those, these things are holding up the parking area? Is that it, that it's at a higher level, am I understanding this properly?
It's even with Route 4A.
Okay, and then the property slopes down?
Correct.
Okay.
And you, the, it's so steep that from Route 4A, you're looking in the second floor windows.
Right, 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 yeah, I know what you mean.
And then off on the other side, where it says 88, there's three propane tanks.
Yeah, that's right. In between here and the neighbor's house, there's some propane tanks in there.
And I could understand where the slope is that you're gonna put in plants that soak up water.
So that plant there, where you see that front of that, it would go this way. So there would be geoco going in front of that. So it's not, you don't see the, you wouldn't see the wood that's there now. It would be a slope, like a vegetation slope. That's what you would see instead of a...
Instead of, instead of this?
Yep.
You'd see this.
You'd see your 45-degree slope.
Here, towards the lake?
Towards the lake. So that's where it's, it's just kind of more, I guess you could say it's more nature than, actually, you would see from a lake than you would see a failing wall.
What can you do there?
Do where...
Do you have to take it out and start from the bottom?
Yeah, so actually, what I would do, I would, I would dig out all the dirt that's there now, right? And then, um, take this, uh, the wood post out, especially where, where my neighbor's house is, because I didn't want to be in his yard trying to get all the, the dirt that would fall into his yard. So I'd dig all the dirt out first, and then I would dig out the, uh, retaining wall.
And then backfill, then backfill with the, then you put the grid down and then backfill and backfill it.
So I put, you'd put down the, uh, gravel, underneath, pack stuff, pack that down. Then you put your blocks on top of that, bring that up, and then every, like, I think it's, uh, 24, 36 inches, you'd put a geoco back into the ground, and then fill back behind it with the...
Right.
That's what you're trying to show here.
Well, you park while you do all this.
My neighbor's, I park in my neighbor's yard across the street.
Wait, sorry, which picture is that? Wait, hold on a second. I looked at all this and now I'm like, oh, no.
All me, I think, all me.
Oh, here it is.
If anybody wants to look at the pictures.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Taylor can get you a copy of it.
Mr. St. Martin, how would you protect the lake during construction?
I would put the, the natural barrier, the retain, the water retaining, dirt retaining material that's required to stay, to...
There's still plants, that's a thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, where's this?
That faces towards the, the lake.
That faces the lake?
That's the same as that.
That. Oh, okay.
Which is this, if I'm not mistaken? The, the wood here is this?
Correct, yeah. So this is just a side cut of what the proposal is, so this would be...
And this is what you're gonna do?
Correct. So this would be in front of this picture here, did you see? So your slope would come like this, almost like the shadow, and it'd come down like this here, and you'd have vegetation. So this you would see from the lake, it'd be more like, like it's part of the lake.
Okay.
You're talking about putting a deck here?
Correct.
At the corner, putting a deck here?
Correct, yep.
That would catch the rain and drip it?
Yeah, so it's not in the picture right here, but up here is where the roof I was talking about, when it comes off. So I've already put some right here, rock here to help with it. So when it comes off this roof, then like a light rain, but you know, with the deck, when it comes off here, this is where it kind of runs into us. I was hoping like you're putting a deck, water did your deck disperse.
And that's a balcony?
Yeah, that was, that was there when I bought the house. It's a deck on the second floor.
So this deck would go here, and that would still be there?
Yeah, so this, originally when I bought the house, had posts going back into this, back to meet the house. I got a 45. So I redid a lot, this outside of the house, I just put this post in to support it. I'm gonna, like to, you know, shrink that down so it's not as big up there.
So the idea is that the deck will break the fall of the water, and then it'll presumably, so you're gonna put rock under it, so the water will go through the deck and then on to some sort of rock or something that's absorbent here?
Picture here, you can see some rock. What I tried to do with it already, when I...
Okay.
So I would do rock underneath the deck here.
Under the whole deck, okay.
And then, you know, I would do it, like, uh, vegetation, flowers across the...
To hold the, to keep it from washing away?
Just to help it to run off.
Yeah, yeah, just slow it down, okay, at all.
Have you considered putting in gutters?
I'm not a big fan of gutters. So the, with the ice, when it comes off, you know, it's gonna take my gutters right off. So that'd be the only downside with the...
You're standing scene.
What's, yeah, yeah.
What is the stuff that you were talking about?
That's the grid, that would go on soap.
And the, you said geoco?
So two types of grid. This cross section here, on that, would be for the 45-degree slope that comes down to help with the, so the water, so the soil doesn't run off. The geo grid goes with the retaining wall blocks. So you put like three rows of retaining wall blocks tight, put the geo grid and tie it back into the driveway. And that holds it, so a lot of times what happens is with that, walls that hail, there's usually, you know, not enough gravel behind there, there's nothing to tie it back in. A lot of times like this retaining wall here, they tied it in with, you know, six-by-sixes, but there's no gravel drainage to get the water away from it. So in the layer, it just pops in.
Mr. St. Martin, did you put the addition on?
I put addition, no, I did not when I bought the kitchen piece, the...
The part where you're referencing the two houses?
Yeah.
Two pieces now come together.
That was there when I bought it.
The addition was there when you bought it.
Yeah, it was.
So you've had this problem since you bought the house?
Pretty much, yeah.
And how long have you owned the house?
About six years now.
Okay.
So I, I basically redid that whole house, the inside, you know, a lot of the work inside now. So the problem, like, why I would've done this earlier was, I guess, my stumbling block was the Hancer permit from Shoreline. Trying to figure out that Shoreline permit, the whole 50, 25, and keep filling it out. But that's kind of, you had a little bit of a challenge to get to that piece.
So the, as you know, the, the protected shoreline is 250 feet. The woodland buffer is 150 feet, and the waterfront buffer is 50 feet. So within that 50 feet, there's really very limited things that you can do. They don't want you doing anything for the good of the lake. And you're now suggesting that you want to be constructing something within less than 34 feet of the lake, right?
Do you have a shoreline permit?
I do. I put in the, uh, there are the constructions there, yeah.
So...
That's also, it makes sense.
So your idea of a deck is an interesting one, but it's not the preferred method from somebody like New Hampshire Lakes. They would want to see you put in some sort of retention or some sort of deflection of the water. The deck with rock under it is not gonna be the best bet. And protection of the lake is what concerns me.
Protection from the runoff?
Protection from the water runoff, because you know that water coming down?
Yeah.
And you have an idea of a deck, but there's other ways to prevent that from being dangerous runoff in the lake with dry wells and with gutters and other means. So the deck is, the deck is, it's an interesting option.
I guess it'll get another way as well. So a deck is to help with it, is it like the only piece of, the other piece is the property itself, right?
Right.
So it adds value to the neighborhoods, adds value to their homes, because it adds value to the town, right? So the deck adds value to the property. So that's kind of just another piece of, what I thought would help with the runoff. Not exclusively, but would help with it.
Yeah.
So...
I worry, see, there was a quick finish. I worry that, that lake has had significant issues over the years, and most recently with cyanobacteria. I also worry that that's drinking water for the town of Lebanon. So we need to be extraordinarily careful, and these rules were put in place to protect that lake. And I, I feel as though we're now gonna be looking to get around those rules.
I, I would think that that, my deck would be a small impact on your overall picture of the...
There's a million small impacts, and we have to look at each one. We can't always say, oh, it's just such a small thing.
So may I, um, is the, is your shoreline permit in here, and what was the shoreline permit granted for?
Uh, the deck and the parking.
For the deck and the parking? So as far as the shoreline commission is concerned, that's okay?
Okay, they're approved.
They do not, they do not go through the, all the applications in detail. They look to make sure that all the boxes are filled out.
Yeah.
They leave it to us to decide whether or not this is gonna impact our community.
Okay.
It's an application of notification, right?
But I did have to fill out more than that. Although, I submitted to you, I submitted to them.
I'm aware of it.
It wasn't just the checklist, so...
But we're cautioned not to take the DES permit as a blessing from the state for your plans. We're cautioned of that. The other thing that we're cautioned to consider is that when we grant such a variance like this, what we're, what we're doing effectively is changing the footprint of the structure on the land. And as you, as the property changes hands, it's very easy for somebody down the line to build structure over that new structure that you've created. So it's no longer, you know, while Paul St. Martin is there, yeah, it's a deck, it has a beneficial impact. But 50 years from now, somebody may build an addition on that and not have to come back to us.
I don't, I think hypothetical situations are kind of, can be, I mean, could be a huge lot of different scenarios where you use hypotheticals, right?
You'd rather me not do that?
Well, so I don't think it's fair to use a hypothetical of what someone could do, because it could be new zoning or less zoning. I know that you guys, there was a zoning meeting the other, earliest month, talking about variance in R1 and R4 and all those things of what I'm going through now, so it kind of comes into, how do you make it easier for people to improve the properties and, you know, make it justification of their home and improve their quality?
Is this your roundhouse?
Yes, it is.
And you live there year-round?
I do.
So we're tasked with...
What do you do with your, this problem is totally irrelevant, but what happens to your sewage? And where do you get your water?
A sewage, I'm on town sewage.
Oh.
And I was, uh...
I didn't know the town sewage was there.
All the way down?
It goes down to the shade.
You know, I think, I think a question you have to ask yourself also is when, when I looked at this, when I was reading it, I thought, okay, right now, that water comes off his roof. There's nothing to break it up. It just goes down and it ends up in the lake without slowing it down at all. The other side is that when you look at the road, I mean, a big problem with 4A is that it's close to the lake all the way down there, so there's all kinds of stuff. So anytime you put anything in that slows that water onto the property and slows it down going to the lake, it gives it a chance to, you know, go into the grass or get into the, you know, get into the stone.
Probably, yeah.
I, I think it's a positive. Now, if he didn't do that, what would happen is all the crap from the road would not be able to, you know, be filtered at all. And then also, if he left his roof the same, the water from that roof comes blasting off, and it's, it's, it's a gutter, it's a V-type thing, right, that comes down. And it just goes down, it just hits the ground and keeps on going. Maybe it even makes a little divot in the ground if it would make it so.
Yeah, I understand.
Let me stop you guys for just a second. I, I think we're into discussion. I think we've heard Mr. St. Martin's presentation. Let's invite him, you can have a seat, we'll of course come back to you, but... Uh, so if we want to discuss, we've probably got to get a motion on the, before us.
I move that we...
Certainly, well, we're not stopping discussion at all.
Oh, okay. I move that we, um, grant Mr. Martin's variance for the purposes of discussion.
We don't have to have for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, well, I, that I move with grant that, this variance.
There you go, okay.
So I, I have a, I have another question, because there's sort of two pieces to this.
Do we have a second to the motion? Thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Yes. I have a question, because there are two...
We didn't get a second.
We have a second.
There are two pieces to this. One is the, the car area, and the other is the, the deck thing. Are we gonna consider each separately? And can we do that and say, well, we could give you the variance for one, but not the other?
I think we could. We could, we could consider them separately, yeah.
Do we talk about the car first?
Do we have to change the motion?
Yeah. Let's have a motion to amend the motion to...
To discuss separately the parking and the deck?
We're gonna, we're gonna split this into two variances unless Mr. St. Martin objects. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna split this into two variance applications. One will be for the work on the parking area, because he wants to make it bigger in the setback, and in the side setback. And a second variance will be asking for the deck, which is new construction in the buffer zone, in the 50-foot buffer zone. So you, do you have that? Okay, so we're gonna take this motion to discuss the parking area. So questions about the parking area? If you have anything more you'd like to ask him?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I think it's very thoughtful, the way you designed this. I think you're using the right materials. To Bob's point, I think this will help with runoff coming off the street. And I am favorably inclined, but I wanted to hear what my other board members have to say.
I, it's a good idea, because it's gonna fall down if he doesn't fix it.
You're next, I promise. I'm gonna stop the outbursts.
What are I just like, I do it all, whatever.
Madeline?
No, you just said that he was enlarging it as well?
He's making it a little bigger.
A little bit bigger, okay, I missed that in the, in the...
Look at the diagram here.
The diagram.
This is gonna be the, the ramp essentially that comes down from the...
Oh, because it's gonna be bigger, so the area that, the parking area is gonna be the same, but the area that it covers because of, okay, so, okay, I get it, that it's gonna, the whole thing.
That green splotches is slope, isn't it?
It's gonna be the 40, that 45-degree triangle that extends farther out. Okay, got it, okay, all right, I was a little bit concerned about that. I move that we make a motion to grant the variance for the, the parking area.
Second.
All right, I have no problems with the parking area whatsoever.
Do we have a comment from the butter on this side, who would, I think, be most affected by what they have?
Yes, do we have comments from the butters for or against? Nope, all right.
These are my neighbors, but they live across the street, kind of getting, but we're not so affected by it.
You're welcome to speak too, either in favor or against.
Oh, well, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. This is Mr. and Mrs. Weiger?
If it helps, I'm in comment. I did talk to both my buddy neighbors, both sides, and they had no objection to it, so...
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine they do. We're gonna talk about the deck after we finish with this, and I think that's where we'll have most of our discussion. Okay, so when I look at this, I think about all the criteria, and I can't think of any reason that we should, we should say no. When I look at hardship in this case, I think there are no provisions of the, of the zoning ordinance that would be advanced by denying this request. And so it would be, I would categorize that as an unnecessary hardship if we said no. I just, I think this is an improvement, and I don't think there's any risk here whatsoever. For the parking area re, regrading, I'm not even sure it, it needs to be before us, but...
Yeah, it's an existing structure.
Yeah, he's just replacing it, yeah. That extension, that ramp extension, I, technically, yes, you should probably get permission for that. Any further discussion on this particular? Any further discussion on this particular?
I think that the slope is a good idea for the parking area because it will filter the stuff that falls off the cars, 4As. It's tiny. It's right there on the road. Um, and when I stopped, I, I had a parking, your neighbor's parking area. And I looked at it because I can't go down and walk around, but I got to see it in three dimensions. And I looked at it and I said, that's just the smallest lot.
So, yeah, they're pretty tight.
They're, the houses there are just jammed together all along that stretch of 4A. By the lake, there's like this.
So you've reminded me of my, of the point I really wanted to make about this particular, um, variance request. And it's that this is a small property. Most of the properties along the lake are similarly small along this section of the, of the shoreline. They're, they're all about the same. They're all small or crowded like this. They're on a thin stretch of line. And I think anything we can do, anything we can do to improve the filtration from Route 4A
Yeah.
is, is a public benefit and is in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. That's one of the main pillars of the ordinance is to protect the water. Conversely, and this is why I like splitting this into two variances, is that the deck goes exactly against that. So.
You want to tie a bow on the part here?
I'd like to tie a bow on the part here. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah.
Any further questions?
No, I made a mo, I make a motion that we, um.
It's already.
Did somebody second it?
Yeah, it's, it's already.
All right.
So the question before you is to approve the variance request for changes to the parking area as he described in his original application. You got that? Thank you, ma'am. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the ayes have it. You have your variance for your parking area. Five to zero. We did not have an alternate voting on that. This is the part that Zeely wants us to be clear about is whether or not an alternate is seated during the, during the vote. Okay. So moving on to the question of the deck. We've heard from Mr. St. Martin. I'm happy to continue to ask him questions about it. Can, would it be okay if I voiced my opinion?
Go right ahead.
All right. So my opinion is that, yeah, it's a small change on his property, but there are a lot of small properties along the lake. That's a narrow strip with a lot of traffic above it. There's a lot of junk coming off. Anything that we do which risks increasing the impervious surface of the lot, and a deck is technically impervious surface, and in future, other ownerships, we do have to consider what happens in the future. And the only thing that we can predict with the deck there is the risk, the possibility that somebody will enclose that, put a roof over it, and now we have truly impervious surface. I think anytime we are taking buffer away from the lake like this, especially in this particular location, the needs of the public outweigh the benefits to the landowner in this particular, in this particular case. They don't like it, but that's where I am on it.
Um, but he already has a deck at the second story that takes the water off the roof and grips it through the flooring and.
You said, but he already has a deck. So are you saying you're offering that as?
I'm saying, well, I'm saying there's already a deck there, but it's at the second story. And I'm thinking about that other house where they wanted to put the deck.
Exactly.
This is, I'm thinking about this particular piece of land in this particular locale. And I'm considering that, yes, there may be an existing, um, second floor deck, but what he's asking for is a considerably larger area that could be, that could more easily take a lot of the buffer away in the future.
Could I ask him a question?
Certainly.
Looking on this picture, how much of it has got the deck above? Because it looks like you want a really narrow piece and then a wider piece.
Yeah. So that's one of the things that we talked about.
I don't understand where.
Yeah. So that's one of the things when I was trying to design it. So when shore for the shoreline, I think that can go up 12 feet from my house. So I could, could have gone from 12 here all the way to 12 here. So I'm trying to reduce that pervious area. So I went 10. And then here's where the water would run off and then I shrunk it down to four. So I was trying to be.
Where is your upper deck?
It's like right in here.
Right there.
What's this 12 feet you're talking about? The shoreline says you have 12 feet.
I think it's so that I, so I can go up from their regulations, I believe it's 12 feet for my lawn performance structure.
Not familiar.
Those are important.
It seems to me that if the, there seem to be sort of two purposes going on here. One is the desire to have a deck and the other is to solve the runoff problem. It seems to me that the runoff problem has other solutions. It might be, you know, river rock. It might be a rain garden. Seems as if that is your primary goal, there are more effective ways to do that. But then you don't get a deck.
And may I interrupt, just to interject?
I have finished.
In point of fact, putting a deck there is not an appropriate way to control runoff because it can be used in the future. From, from the zoning ordinance point of view, it is part of the structure. So without coming back to anybody or asking any further permission, they can build an.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, can the shoreline people say something about that if they want a closer?
He could walk out there the day after we approve this and put an, put a, uh, put an addition on the house right there. Without a permit? Well, you'd have to get a building permit, yes. But once we approve it, you know, we're, he can argue importantly, whoa, you've extended the footprint of the building. Which is why we're really careful with adding, with allowing decks within buffers and setbacks.
I move that.
We always have.
I, uh, I applaud you for looking to slow the runoff. I think we all need to be doing that. Um, I don't think this is the best way to do it. And, um, I think God is our idea. If you're opposed to that, I think rain gardens and dry wells and those sorts of things. And then a lot more vegetation along the edge of the lake as well. I think the ancient lakes would be tremendous in this regard. Bring them in, it would be some great ideas. Um, they're more than happening.
Yeah, you could still have an area that you could sit in and enjoy and would serve that purpose of the deck, but it would also actually solve the problem with the, with the water coming off.
Or you could have a canvas roof too.
I think what Madeline had for us said.
I was going to make a motion that we deny the request for variance to build a deck.
Second?
Can I just make one more comment for you and make your votes on it?
We're not going to vote quite yet. We're just getting a motion out in front of us. We, sometimes we get ahead of ourselves, but the real process is supposed to be applicant does a presentation, we ask some clarifying questions, and then we're supposed to get a motion ahead of us. And then we discuss and ask a lot of questions. So.
I think you're approving.
No, I'll, I'll make sure everybody has a chance to comment before we start voting. Okay? You'll know. It's not going to be a surprise. A second. Okay. So we have, we have a motion to deny and we have a second. Um, I think I heard, I saw some other questions or comments.
I was just thinking, you know, when you were talking about a nice place to sit is you could put up one of those canvas things with hooks on the house that wouldn't be.
Like an awning, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like an awning. I don't know if, well, if it's one of those automatic awnings that just, but a covering thing.
Can you come back to the variance?
Mr. St. Martin, would it be possible for you to put a deck outside of the house? And accomplish some of your objectives or that's not be practical?
Oh, well.
You know, like, I mean, you could still be within, with that, outside of the 50 foot for a nice deck over here, it'd still have.
Yeah, that, this is pretty like, so run into the parking area. So there is like a deck right here that's existing. It's certainly be kind of hard to kind of go on to. Just the way that, but traffic goes down because it goes here, there's some steps to go here and then down to the lake. So it'd be kind of hard actually to do this.
And this is wooded over here.
Yeah. So this, this area here is considered like a natural wooded area. This is natural wooded area. These are all trees here. There's trees in front of the house.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing you from doing a similar thing in front of the house with the land and the, what do you call it, the GO, what's it? Um, that you're all, that you're doing on the parking area.
Did you, did you want to make a statement?
Just, just like, well, I mean, I.
Go ahead.
I'd, I'd say the only downside to not putting the deck on is I'm looking to sell the house. So I'm not going to do any more that they, that would help with it. So that water runoff.
That's what I mean.
It's just going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only downside. I'm trying to help it. I'm trying to be a decent stewardess. And you guys are sitting here saying, well, the deck doesn't do this, it doesn't do that. It intrudes, you can build on it, but I would think you would need a permit. You're going to build addition to it, a roof on it. I think that'd be kind of hard. It's windows up above to tie that on to the, make it part of the house because there's already windows and doors above it. Uh, so that's one thing I, you know, I'm trying to tell you where I'm at with it. Because I am going to sell, I'm looking to sell it. Um, and I'm trying to help with that, the, the, uh, stuff we just had and into it earlier last week. Um, and I think it would help as a result of that water runoff that's supposed to happen.
I think you're right on all those points. I think it will help you sell the house. I think it will improve the value. I think it will help with the water runoff in this situation. But none of that is outweighed by the fact, and we have long experience with this on this board, that if we allow, we allow a deck within that buffer, we have increased the permeable surface of the, of the property. And that runs from now on. And it, you know, there's, there's plenty of examples that I can't cite right now. But if we go back through the cases that we've decided.
There's nothing to keep somebody from just knocking the whole house down and building it. You know, you say it would be hard to add on. Around here, people just knock the whole thing down and, and build new on that then new footprint. So, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And the footprint would include the extension.
And the, exactly. So now you definitely improve the value of the property because somebody can come along and build a bigger house than they would ordinarily be allowed to build.
So it's, it's not our task to try to swing you to our opinion. But I guess what we're trying to do is offer you an understanding of our reasoning.
I, I would kind of, I don't want to be argumentative, but like to say that someone could come back and build on top of the deck, I think you would need a permit for that, right?
You would need a permit.
So I think that would come back before this board.
Nope.
No, it would be a building permit.
Okay, so.
Not a zoning adjustment.
Okay. So that would go to Rob and you'd say you probably could do a variance.
Nope.
No, because you already got the variance.
Yeah. They already have the, the outline of the building that's been changed. You've already given permission for that. So all you need is a building permit at that point. And if you want to knock the whole building down and build, as long as you follow the same lines, you can build whatever you want.
The footprint is there. That's why we're so con, we're so concerned about this. And as, as Mike said, it goes with, that belongs to the land. So anybody buying your piece of land is buying that footprint, the, the now new bigger footprint.
And we really, Dan has particularly said it, and I'd like to second it because it sounds kind of like I'm just beating up on you. We really do applaud your, your desire to improve the filtration, you know, and the protection of the lake. That's a big deal. We really do like that.
Yeah.
But you're about to sell it.
I, I.
Next, next year, we could have some whack job in there who does not care about the lake. And I'm probably not supposed to say that as an official, but we could have somebody in there who does not care about the lake. You know, and knocks that place down. Now we've got a, you know, a metal roof within 35 feet of the lake. That's what we, that's the, the balance that we have to strike. Any other questions? Any further discussion? Any comments from the public on this particular issue?
No.
All right. There will be a period at the end of the meeting if you want to just make general comments about anything you want. You can each have three minutes. Mr. Buffet? Dr. Buffet, I'm sorry.
Mr. is talking a lot of, um, obviously, uh, the, I, I think your reasoning at the end of this, okay, appeal for, for an appearance about this, I think the part of that is very good. And I think that that, the way this decision appears to be going is also correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The question before us, I'm not hearing any other need for discussions. So the question before us is shall we deny, um, Mr. St. Martin's request for a variance to build a deck within the, um, the 50-foot riverfront setback buffer as requested in his original plan or his original application? All in favor of denying the variance?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed to denying this variance? Say aye. Okay. So the variance request for the deck is denied, five to zero. You can talk to Mr. Taylor about your rights, about appeal?
I know the rights.
Okay.
Very good. So I know there's already been legislation on it, legal process of, so, are very searching, so.
Okay, good.
I know that they study.
Right. And he'll have your notice of decision about the, about the parking area variance.
Can I say thank you for your explanations and answering all our questions? That was really helpful.
And I really enjoyed reading your application. You used comprises correctly, which is rare. And you had a very funny typo toward the end.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Did, uh, did you guys do a finding on that?
Uh, we did not. We did not. Sure. I think we are, we've already voted, so I'm not sure how to go about this. Please list the facts that you considered in your, uh, please list the facts that, that you used in considering your decision to vote on these two variances.
The driveway one, the current system is failing.
The proposed changes will mitigate runoff from Route 4A.
All materials, uh, to be used were environmentally responsible.
That part doesn't. Because the major fact is the parking area.
There was an existing structure and you used to be building it.
The, the, the plan to slope the parking area toward the lake will improve the permeability. Is that what I was saying?
Yep.
So the facts on the deck, um, well, the, the existing, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'll read those. Shall I read these first? Make sure I got what everybody wants. Current system is failing. Changes will mitigate runoff from Route 4A. Environmentally responsible materials chosen. Rebuilding existing structure. The, I'm going to say ramp extension is composed of all permeable materials. It's basically dirt, but I don't know how to say. Scott, what would you say?
Aggregate.
Well, permeable materials and plants because plants soak up water too.
Vegetation, exactly.
Oh, yeah, you got to say vegetation, don't you?
I wrote, okay, ramp extension is composed of aggregate and veg, meat and veg. New slope improves permeability. Okay. Thank you, Scott. All right. Deck.
The standing seam roof throws water down directly onto the, the, uh, the ground below.
The proposed deck is within the fifty-foot so back.
Yeah.
Waterfront buffer.
The waterfront buffer.
Waterfront buffer, that's good. Thank you, Dan.
Proposed.
The proposed deck will extend the footprint of the house.
Well, yeah, will increase the.
Extension.
Yeah.
Well, you wanna say increase instead of extend? Yeah, that works.
It, well, increases the area and extends, but.
We're doing this for the ages, I know.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
Granted, the variance would, uh, not be able to be rid of the ordinance.
Hold that thought. What's the fact that's based on?
The deck would increase the impervious area of the property.
So when I thought that, the facts that I considered were that most of the properties in that section of the, of the shoreline are, are all small, crowded.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't want to make the problem worse just because there's already non-conformity, right?
No, that wasn't the point I was, I was working towards. The surrounding properties are all similar. They're small, they're crowded. So that makes any piece of the buffer precious.
And that it's the distance from 4A to the lake, it's just that, you know, it's a narrow strip of land, so there's very little space to also be a buffer, a lake buffer for that extra amount of stuff that's coming off the road in addition to the house.
It's a coffee stand.
It is.
That's what.
Well, then it's a narrow lot and there's not, there's not much space for it to disperse, so that buffer zone is sort of extra precious.
I think it's, it's fair to say, as a finding of fact, what Mike was saying about along that section of the lake, the houses are very crowded. We drive along, they really are.
Oh, I know.
And that matters.
All right, I've got standing seam funnels, roof runoff onto the area of the proposed deck. The proposed deck would all be in the fifty-foot wetland buffer. What's the square footage that you were proposing, Mr. St. Martin?
Three hundred and twenty-eight.
Thank you. Deck increases the footprint of the house. Deck increases impervious surface on the lot. Uh, we should not fail to mention that applicant has an approved DES permanent, permit.
Yes, that's correct.
Like those last two points you made, I would finish them with, within the waterfront buffer, so it increases the impervious surface. For that, it's, it's not just we're increasing this footprint, but within the waterfront.
All right, I'm doing that. Ms. Miniter, I am using some abbreviations I may need to review with you. Surrounding properties are all similarly small and crowded. Route 4A is close to the lake along the shoreline there.
Excuse me, I ask you to consider using a word other than crowded. That's I might say that they are all quarter acre lots or something, or.
They're less than quarter acres.
Less than.
They're close together.
You can say crowded, you can say.
It's dense.
It is.
I think he was looking for a more specific word. One was less qualitative. Yeah, something qualitative.
Can I say are all similarly sized?
Sure.
Yeah, and it's.
You can say close together.
The, it's densely, the building, it's dense building.
You can say they are close together. That wouldn't be prejudiced.
I mean, that, that was what you would talk about, whatever that would, the term would be, that it's a de, a neighborhood, the density of the neighborhood, which is the number of structures per, you know, area.
All right. I think we're good.
Okay.
Next hearing. It's up to you if you want to stick around.
Stick around.
Okay, so this is land use case Z twenty-four, zero, seven, zero, two. Sage Gale and Taylor Anne Daly are seeking variance relief from infield zoning ordinance, Article four, Section four, zero, one, uh, point two, Paragraphs L and M, to construct an equipment shed within the prescribed setbacks to a wetland, Jones Hill Road, and a side lot line. Subject parcel is point one-six acres.
Again.
What is it?
It really is.
It really is. It's located at Jones Hill Road, tax map fifteen, Lot thirty-two, in the R three residential zoning district. Subject parcel is owned by Sage Gale and Taylor Anne Daly.
Mr. Sanborn, it's a pleasure to have you appear before us again.
Did, is that?
Can we wait and let Mr. Sanborn do his presentation first?
No, I think there's a mistake here. I, I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Both pieces say that the subject parcel is oh-point-one-six acres. Are they both oh-point-one-six acres?
That is, that is correct. Coincidental but true.
Oh, okay. But when we read it last night, they can't be both the, exactly the same size. And they are, okay.
We got together and schemed a little before the, uh. Uh, all right, first order of business for Rob, payment of the fees. So, uh, I am representing, um, Sage Gale and Taylor Daly, married couple, who own the property in question. It's located on Jones Hill Road, does not have an assigned street number. It is opposite number two thirty-two. It's a, about a quarter mile uphill from the town line on Jones Hill Road. Um, it's on the right as you're heading uphill.
Here's the map.
Yeah.
It's across the street from their house.
That is correct. Yep.
Yeah, and the driveway is right across the street from there. It took me a while to figure that out last night.
So the, um, yeah, the property is, we've discussed is zero-point-one-six acres. Uh, they've asked, they cannot make it to tonight's hearing, so they've asked me to represent them. There is a letter in the file that they've signed authorizing me to do so. And, um, what, uh, this is a, uh, another very small lot of, of zero-point-one-six acres. It was created in the nineteen-fifties clearly for the purpose of, uh, housing a barn or garage of some sort. Uh, I'm not sure who it was originally used for, whether it was the owners across the street. A little bit later on, uh, became, uh, was purchased by the people that owned across the street, and it's been, uh, owned by the, in common with that parcel, but as a separate lot, uh, continually since the nineteen-fifties. There was a garage that was twenty by twenty-two feet, and, um, that was there for a long time. I couldn't figure out exactly when it was built. There's also evidence of another old barn of some sort. Uh, there's some stone foundation, but there's also some concrete, so that suggests that we're not dealing with an ancient nineteen-seventies foundation, uh, or anything like that. So, uh, the land was originally conveyed as, indeed as land and buildings, and it was continually conveyed as land and buildings and subsequent deeds. So it, it appears it's been continually used for this purpose. Uh, so the problem we have, this parcel is located in the R three zone, and of course, the nineteen-fifty was long before that was, uh, in anybody's thoughts. And when you apply the current setbacks to the boundary lines, you're left with a trapezoid that's two feet wide on one end and expands about almost thirteen on the other end. And the, in addition to those setbacks, we're also closer than fifty feet to a jurisdictional wetland, which doesn't lie on this property. It lies on the adjacent property behind. So, so we have both of those two setbacks that by the current standards cannot be met at all. I mean, you can't, you simply can't put a functional building on this lot under today's regulations. So what, the, the building, the garage was torn down, uh, shortly after they purchased the property, due of being unsafe. The slab still exists there. What they would like to do is to work from the existing footprint of the slab, uh, that was in the old garage, and then they would like to extend it, um, a little bit noidly in the direction where there's the most room on the lot. And what they're proposing is simply an equipment storage barn. It's not really relevant, but I think they're, they're looking at a, like a three enclosed, three sides enclosed with an open front. Uh, they're not looking for anything that would ever house apartments or create sewage or anything like that. It's simply to, uh, house tractors, farm implements, small camper, of that sort of thing. Um, so they're gonna work with as much of the existing footprint as possible. Uh, the direction we are expanding the size a little bit, if, if we're allowed to, uh, is in the direction that's where there is no issue with the side setback. Uh, the new structure will not be any closer to the rear line or the wetlands or to the front line than what the existing garage footprint is. So we're not gonna make anything more non-conforming than what it has been all along. And, um, so that, uh, is also, there's gonna be, the structure itself will be twenty feet deep, same as the garage, but thirty feet instead of the twenty-two, and then they would like, uh, and just an open shed roof on one end to be able to get a few farm implements and that sort of thing, mowers and, and rakes and such, so.
Wasn't this, isn't the slab twenty by thirty?
The slab is twenty by twenty-two, so we're looking to extend just a little bit over, over that.
So on the drawing, the existing slab is this one with the little sort of texture and then the addition.
Shaded area.
And then the addition is the, is here, and then this little second smaller part is the sort of lean to whatever the, the open.
Exactly correct.
The open area, okay.
Exactly correct. So, so that, um, that really is it. In the simplest terms, this is a lot that was created for a certain use when, um, the, my clients simply would like to continue to use it in that manner. Uh, it's impossible to do so in the, um, the current zoning ordinance, which did not exist when the lot was created. Uh, and that we believe is the hardship. And the, um, so, other than that, I'll turn it over to the board or any comments that the butters may have.
Can I ask a question?
Ask questions for clarification?
Well, yeah.
Certainly.
They own, they own across the street and they own this. It isn't one piece?
It is not. No, they are separate. They are entirely separate, independent lots. This is, they could sell this by itself if they so desired.
Oh, so it is a part of the original, that's, that's an older house. It's a nice house.
Yes, but this, this was parcel in question was originally part of the land across the road.
Oh, okay.
And was created completely independently of the house that, uh, that, where my clients live in.
Yeah.
Uh, it later, after it was initially created, it later was purchased by those people, presumably so they could have a barn
Yeah.
across the road from the house, but, but it still is independent. It's a separate chain of titles.
Road is in between. They couldn't just say this is now part of our property.
You could say that the two parcels are but, but it's an independent, independent autonomous piece of land from a legal, uh, perspective. So it could be, it could be sold separately and it should be treated on its own merits, not in association with any abutting lands.
Would you merge it? You couldn't merge it.
Not, not parcels on the opposite side of the road, but the fact that there's a public road basically creates the two lots.
Oh.
I have some questions.
Well, because, because my farm in Hayrow owned both sides of your ten and it was one piece.
Same, it's a whole different ten.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Sanborn. Has this, do you need to ask something else, or can I?
No, you need a motion to discuss it, don't you?
I'm asking Mr. Sanborn some more questions about his application. Phrasing is important. I think what I'm hearing is that your clients owned this property when there was a garage out of the garage, fell into disrepair, collapsed, was demolished. They would like to install a new garage, effectively continuing the, the previous use.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit, it's probably not even a garage. It's a, this is really just an equipment storage structure that, that they're proposing, but, uh, but essentially, yes.
Yeah.
Storage of.
So it's an anc, it's an ancillary building to the property.
Yes, correct.
And they would like to continue that use.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I think then what we're dealing with is an expansion of a, of an existing non-conforming use. That's the variance that we're looking for. I think, because effectively what you're asking for is to extend the building from twenty by twenty-two to twenty by thirty with a lead to on the, on the, uh, north side.
Fair interpretation.
Does anybody else think I'm wrong about that?
No.
No, except, except I don't think that there was a.
Sorry, Susan, sorry, what were you saying, Dan?
I was just confirming, Mike had said you're going from a twenty by twenty-two that's been torn down to a twenty by thirty with a four-foot attached.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that four-foot attached piece you're talking about, a lead to roof?
Just a, well, completely old shed roof, yes.
Does it have a slab under it?
Uh, I.
Will it have a slab under it?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
Okay, let's assume it, it would.
And Mr. Sanborn, you said, uh, in your letter, and you said just now, the slab, uh, the existing slab is within the fifty, uh, foot setback area to the New Hampshire Traditional Wetlands Association and a small water course. Um, it's within fifty. Do you know how much it is? It looks like on the map, it's about nine feet.
Yeah, it is about, yeah, just about nine and a half to ten feet to the edge of the jurisdiction of wetlands.
Okay, because you're like eight-point-three to the property line and then you're, call it nine to ten feet.
Yeah, that's about it, yeah.
So in a way, the variance is on the extra feet that are going, that are being added, because if it weren't for that, they could just put, put, you know, you could just rebuild the building and, and that was, that's it. So it's the extra, how close the extra feet are to the water, not, because the other thing, we don't have any say in it at this point.
Right, and that's why we're approaching it the way we are to ensure that nothing, no part of the expansion is going to be any closer to any, any of the, uh, reference lines, if you will,
Right.
than, than what the existing structure is.
Right, okay.
What? Nine feet?
To the, to the wetlands.
To the wetlands buffer line?
No, to the actual wetlands.
All right.
The, the entire existing slab is within the fifty-foot buffer to the wetlands.
All right, so.
But we will not be going any closer.
What you're also asking for is twelve by twenty feet worth of. What you're also asking for is twelve by twenty feet worth of more impingement in a wetlands buffer.
That is correct.
When was that building torn down? I don't ever remember.
Very shortly after they purchased it. They purchased the property and as it was relayed to me, they took one look at the garage and believed it was not worth, it was unsalvageable.
Oh, okay. I didn't know how long they owned the property.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one. Yeah, there was, yeah, there was nothing to salvage there. So they, so they, you know, I mean, they really improved the value of the neighborhood by doing what they did.
How long did they own that property?
Since about 2021.
Susan, it says in the application, it was demolished in the summer of 21.
Yeah, they purchased it, I believe, in the spring. And one of the first things they did was to tear that garage down.
And they intentionally kept the concrete floor so that if they wanted to rebuild, they wouldn't have to come here. They could just, in that footprint, they could just.
I can't answer that for certain, but that would seem like the logical assumption, yeah. Either that or they just didn't get to the point of excavating it out. So I can't specifically answer yes or no. But if they were here, I'm sure they could, but it's a logical assumption.
It's perfectly safe for them to come back within two or three years and say, we're continuing an existing nonconforming use, whether they have that, you know, whether they had removed that slab. If they had removed that slab, we could have taken that as evidence that they did not tend to continue that use. But because it's there, helps their case. What I'm concerned about is allowing the 240 square feet in the wetlands buffer. If you wanted to rebuild that garage, you wouldn't even have to be here. If you just wanted to.
We realize, we realize that, yeah. They're fully aware of that.
So I have a similar concern. And I looked up with the help of Rob, RSA 482-A. That's the New Hampshire Wetlands law. And there's actually no setback in that law.
Correct.
However, we as a town voted on a set of zoning ordinances and we decided to put a setback in there.
Correct, also correct.
I can't speak for the voters. I wasn't there and what was in their head, so I won't even try. Other than that, I suspect part of the reason is because they're very concerned about conservation. I also know that we did a project a couple of years ago that members of this board were very involved with the master plan. And we came up with seven guiding principles for this town. And the first one is to protect our diverse natural resource base, in particular, the water resources. And do this both from a regulatory point of view and a nonregulatory conservation of this. So I'm, you can see where I'm headed. My current thinking, I'm open to other opinions and please try to convince me otherwise, is that I could approve the rebuilding. In fact, I don't have to approve it. You just do it on that footprint. But going further than that, because of the proximity to the wetlands, I am at this point more likely to say no than yes, but remaining open-minded.
Ma'am?
I do have an idea, but I'll let you folks move us over.
Let's let Scott respond to that, so we can, so we can close that thought. Then Madeline, you'll be next.
Yeah, I have a thought.
Please.
Just a thought that kind of comes up on the fly is if, if we were to ask for a condition to, if, if in all other aspects, the board sees that to grant the variance, would you consider granting a condition that there were a gutter with a downspout into a small detention basin at the corner of the structure? I would propose a three-by-three foot square box, essentially three feet deep, that the downspout would then run into, which serves as a detention basin. It filters out any contaminants that would be coming off the roof. That is typical of what the shore land, the DES requires with their shoreline purposes, when you're putting additional roof within the buffer to a lake or water body. I'm quite sure, I can speak for my clients, that they would be amenable to some sort of a mitigation along that line as a condition if it, in all other factors, the board was comfortable.
We are cautioned against trying to apply conditions to approvals of variances. I'd like that a lot. It would, it would make me happy if, if we could find a, you know, if we could talk to our lawyer and get him to say, yeah, I think we could probably find language that would work. Madeline, does that close that matter?
I think, I mean, for now, it's really, it's in your hands, not mine. So just offering out there as a.
Can you make a note? Somebody make a note that we need to. I'll maintain it. Madeline, you have a question?
I did have a question. So was my understanding correct that the entire lot is on the wetland? Or only those nine or only that little part?
Well, none of the, none of the actual wetlands are located on the lot.
On the lot, okay.
But the fifty-foot buffer encompasses all of the lot that is outside of the setback to the road is within. In other words, you have your building setback to the road and then everything from there back is within the fifty-foot buffer. So there is no, there's no place you can build without, there's no place you can build without impacting some one buffer.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, because I was looking at this and thinking that the slab is almost square and wondering why it wasn't, why you weren't putting the addition here? But is that because it's then in the setback of the road?
Because we're trying to not make any nonconformances more nonconforming. In other words, right now, the existing slab at its closest point is twenty-three feet to the, to the road right-of-way line.
Correct, yeah.
And where it's being extended, it's going to end up twenty-eight feet. And no point will it be closer than that existing twenty-three feet with the rear line. It just happens to be perpendicular to the rear line. Another happy coincidence, like the 2.16 acre lots, I guess. But it just happens to be parallel with the rear line. So by extending it in the line of the slab, the eight-point-three-foot offset to the boundary line that currently exists is maintained and it will not be encroaching any closer to the property lawn or to the wetlands for that matter.
Let me point out.
Does that address your question or did I misinterpret?
No, because my question is if instead of putting the addition here, what happens if it goes here?
Towards the road?
Yes, so if it goes towards the road, is that less in?
We're creating a greater nonconformity.
Because then it's in the road setback?
Well, because it's in the buffer and in the road setback.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, okay.
There would be more into the road setback than it is now. It's already into the road setback.
I think I can see your confusion.
I would, Mike.
You keep saying that it's no more nonconforming, but that's not true. And you may just have misunderstood or it's simply adding the extra impermeable surface in the buffer makes it more nonconforming. Yes, ma'am?
I would like it if Rob could put up a picture that shows the wetlands of that piece of property. If you've got a picture?
A tech map?
Well, they're shown on my map in Planter.
I see that, but I'm having trouble visualizing.
What they, I can describe to you. There's an intermittent stream that flows probably twenty to forty feet off the back line of this property. And adjacent to that intermittent stream is just some poorly drained wetland. It's, it's, it's a, it's a low spot where the water collects and so.
This is the top of Jones Hill.
We're not talking, we're not talking about a big marsh with cattails or anything like that. It's a forested, what's known as a forested wetland. And the soil is saturated with water enough, with enough duration during the year that it creates what the state deems is wetlands. It's under their jurisdiction. So it's, it's a, it's a muddy, it's a muddy spot that you'll get your sneakers wet if you walk through. That's maybe the simplest way to describe it.
That's 365 days a year.
Uh, no, not necessarily.
It drops a lot during some.
When you get to this time of year, it's, there's, it's not, there's not always water on the surface when you get to the dry, dry portions of the year.
I hesitate to try to judge, you know, to try to qualify wetlands. I prefer just to say, all right, the state says it's a wetland. That's what I'm going with.
It is true. Yeah, certainly, there's no question about that.
And the other matter is that our zoning ordinance is law. And so under law, there is a fifty-foot wetland buffer that surrounds it and it completely covers the property. So any increase in the nonconforming use on that property is an increase in that buffer. This doesn't feel.
The addition is the farthest direction.
Sorry, can Mike finish his thought, Susan? Sorry, what were you saying, Mike? I want to hear the rest of that thought.
So this is an increase in the, in taking away from the buffer. It doesn't feel like this is as drastic a situation as we had in the, in the previous hearing, because this buffer is probably not as precious as the buffer that guards Lake Muskoma from Route Four. So I'm, I'm less hesitant to consider allowing this construction to proceed, you know, to allow, to allow this variance. I'm looking again at that balance. Here's a piece of property these people own. Yeah, they could rebuild there. They could do a little bit more with it if we let them. And I, I don't see that on this particular piece of property, surrounded as it is by these huge pieces of property that are, that will have to come to us if they want to impinge on the buffers.
So sorry, what were you saying, Susan?
I was going to say, it looks like where they want to put that little addition is the farthest point away from the lot that shows the wetlands. That it's the best place to put it.
I think you're right.
Is what I was going to say, but maybe I'm wrong.
So they all own this lot on the property across the street?
Yes, correct.
But there's no room to put a shed there?
It's really irrelevant. This is, what they can do with their other piece of property is irrelevant to what they can or can't do with this property. It's an autonomous lot.
And they're two separate pieces of property, so we can't take into consideration what goes on in the other one?
Well, they have a garage. There are people I know.
But we, but that's not, that's irrelevant for the purposes of what we're, of what we're doing today, unfortunately.
What they're proposing to do makes sense considering what they have for houses, garage on the other side of the road.
Yeah, if they can't functionally use this lot, then why would they hold there?
Do we want to entertain a motions that we can discuss criteria and findings of fact?
The move that we grant the, grant the variance.
I'm sorry, Dan, what were you saying?
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were just saying. Are you saying you're less concerned about this than you were the shore of Muskoma because it's what?
It's not the lake.
It's not the lake. It's, we're not, we're not trying to protect the lake from Route Four and from the crowded conditions along that lakefront. That makes the buffer seem much more precious in that area to me than this buffer feels. So it's a qualitative difference.
Yeah.
Have you driven up there? There's a lot of fields. Next to their house is a great big hay field. Down Jones Hill, there's more fields and then.
Well, they don't own that entire field.
But there's lots of, no, no, they don't.
The point is it's not.
But that still is irrelevant.
It's irrelevant, but when you're talking about the buffer and if you own the buffer, what Mike's saying is that it's less important than the lake. And I would try.
Can I give a satellite view? When do you want to hear something in butter?
Yeah, the old.
Are you in a butter?
I own the property with wetlands on it.
All right, let me ask, let me ask. Do we have any more questions, particularly from Mr. Sandborn? Or can I take questions from them? And then we will do our motion.
But at some point, I'd like to continue.
Yeah, that's the idea.
Okay, let's do that in the discussion after motion ready. You won't let us forget anything. Okay, statements for or against?
Sure, I'm the advisor. I have two thirty-seven Johnstone Road. I own the wetlands right in front, well, right behind what they want to put the shed.
So that, when you say behind, you mean here?
Further away from the road.
Yeah, the wetlands, out of the wetlands and all that stuff that they're talking about, that's my problem.
Okay, so.
Sergeant Curtis, you got it?
Your lot, your this lot here?
I don't know, is that the ribbon lot with eleven acres?
It's, it's got, it's got a house or not?
It's, it's, I'm showing it as number thirty-one, but the three is just cut off in the picture a little bit.
Yeah, and that's yours.
Yes. I've been there for twenty-five years. And I'd say for seventeen or eighteen of that twenty-five years, there was a shed there. And then it eventually leaned over, fell down. And the Dolphins who owned that, that piece of land, they planned to rebuild it, then they decided to sell. And they sold it to new owners and they removed the, the shed. But I have no problem with the shed being there. I want to say the wetlands there, it's not pristine wetland. It's an overseas wetland. The water that runs through it is mostly run off of the winter when the snow comes. And then once, you know, into the summer, there is, oh, my, it's dry. But, you know, there's ferns going there and there's, you know, all the qualities of a wetland. So it is officially a wetland. But I think that if you were to extend that shed by the eight feet they want, the impact would be tremendous. And I've been on this board for five years. And if I was here in this case on this board, I would grant it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
Yeah.
Uh, it's Springer.
First name?
Hey, sorry.
First period twenty of all, my son is gone. I can't.
Okay, let's have a motion. A member's feeling strongly one way or the other. And then we'll discuss our criteria and we can continue to ask questions and hear from the public if we like.
I make a motion to accept the variance as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion to, is it okay if I change that to approve?
Yes.
The variance request as applied for. All right, we have a second.
I'll get a picture.
I gotta run, guys.
Thank you.
I'll see you later.
I'll contact you. I want to put the lawyers at the world because it keeps getting bounced.
See, I was, what is the other email there?
All right, I'll find it in my email and I'll hook you up.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor and Mrs. Buffet, do you have anything you want to say? Not present? Okay.
I think it, it might.
Okay.
Went down the street with you two. You can see everybody popping right here. Turn, kind of see where that garage used to sit. About there?
Yes, that driveway is actually shown on the map to help give you some perspective. So, and you can see a little bit of the slab beyond the end of the driveway. And then in the, in the wooded area behind the open is where that forested wetland area is.
Let me read out the findings of fact that I've written down so that we can all agree whether they are factual and we can add to them if we need to. And then from those, we can discuss the criteria. The lot is 0.16 acres in the R3 zone. The lot is unbuildable because of the zoning setbacks and zoning, yeah, because of the zoning setbacks.
Well, I mean, you can build up the existing footprint, right?
Yeah, you still can, yeah.
We call it unbuildable because there's, there's no conforming. I mean, you couldn't put a conforming structure on there.
I mean, you could, but it would be really.
Really silly.
It would be a conversation, to be so sure.
I'll put effectively unbuildable. Buildings existed in the past. This lot. A garage existed until 2012. A garage existed until 2021. And the 20 by 22-foot slab is still present. Proposed building would not impinge any further into the, that's not true.
I think you meant distance, when you were talking close.
Refrase it, at no point will it be any closer to the, to the features of the question.
Proposed building would not be any closer to the back and wetlands, uh, to the back lot line and wetlands.
That's, that's accurate.
Intent is to continue the existing use, replacing the 20 by 22-foot building with a 20 by 34-foot building.
Do we also want to mention that even though the distances are different, it doesn't change the relationship to the setbacks for the road?
It's, is the same concept of-
As the, exactly, is the-
At no point will it be closer than the existing structure-
Right.
To the, to the front.
To those pretty, because those are the two, the two setbacks that we have. The one to the wetlands and one to the road. If I understand correctly.
Well, three, one to the, one to the road, one to the-
But those are the ones affected.
To the rear boundary line.
Right, those are the ones that are affected.
So, yeah, there's actually three.
Mike, can we increase the impervious surface in the wetland buffer zone by 240 square feet?
Yep. What I have written here, and we'll have to change this, I think, is buildings, the building's extra footprint is 240 square, is, I wrote, is 12 by 20, 12 feet by 20 feet, equalling 240 square feet. All 240 square feet is in the wetlands buffer.
Does somebody know math to be able to say how, by what percentage the impermeable surface will be increased?
The, the impermeable surface on this specific lot-
Right, right.
On 30, 50%.
We can certainly calculate that. Um, I can, I will point out the, and it's not really relevant because we're within the other setback, but the overall impervious area is well under the zoning lot coverage.
Ah, okay, well, then, then-
So, so we're not, we're not close to-
Okay, then don't, we put you down-
We're not close to that coverage limit. It's the fact that, it, it's the fact that it's in the 50-foot buffer-
Right.
-in the wetland is what's important here.
Right. So, the amount of that is, you know, how much that's going to be increased in the effect of that?
So, technically speaking, if you're looking at the buffer to that entire wetland, we're talking about a fairly long water course. Would be a very miniscule percentage of, of the actual buffer that we are-
That is being made impermeable, okay.
So, it's, we're really, I mean, in that sense, we're not dealing with just the area that's on this lot. We're dealing with the area that's within the entire wetland.
Right.
And that would be a very miniscule area-
Very small.
Percentage that we're, that we're talking about here.
Okay.
If that helps.
No, that, that does, that does help.
Put in a little bit of perspective, maybe.
So, water on the wetland, does it actually go anywhere? I mean, is it, if they just-
There's, there's a culvert. It, again, it's sort of, it's adjacent to an intermittent stream water course. It's, it's probably three feet wide. It's dry most, a good portion of the year. This all funnels, but the, because it's low, it's low land, it's adjacent to this water course, the water just sort of infiltrates and sits in this low area, which is what creates the wetland condition. It all funnels into a culvert that goes under Curtis's driveway. And then the water course just continues down. It kind of diverges away from Jones Hill Road, and it goes downhill and just ends up in the, the big wetland that's at the bottom of Jones Hill as you get towards the town line. It's in a big, broad, low area. It just, it ends up in there eventually. I can't tell you exactly where, but that's where it ends up.
All right. Overall, impervious area is well within our limits. Surrounding area is largely undeveloped with much open wetland buffer all around the wetlands.
Yeah, the bottom of Jones Hill is in Cayman.
I'm sorry?
The bottom of Jones Hill is in Cayman.
That is, that's true, yeah, let me not swear this up, so.
Discussion?
So, Mike, we were talking earlier-
Yes.
And you said, wetlands is a wetland, and you don't like to try to grade wetlands.
I was thinking about that, right?
Yeah. And I, I tend to agree. I also think that water is water. And we need to be protecting the water, whether it be a stream, a river, a pond, or a lake. And I think we need to always, anything involving wetland needs to come to a higher level. Having said that, I'm a reasonable person. And I like where Mr. Sandborn was going earlier, saying, hey, if we could actually do something, we could work together here. And I know we can't ask them to do that. I don't believe we can. But I would be much more likely to say yes to this if I saw that any applicant is, is willing to meet us halfway.
Thank you.
Not any applicant, let me change that. In this case, I think that would be a step in the right direction.
Uh, I'll just answer, I, I agree with you. I'll comment on your observation about my earlier statements. I'm comfortable distinguishing between Lake Muscoma and this wetland. I mean, that's, that's such a gross difference that I'm comfortable doing that. And I'm comfortable as well considering the qualitative difference between the stress the buffer zone along that lakefront is under, with the stress that this, this wetlands buffer zone is under, considering there's so very little building around it. So, in my opinion, even though I'm not a wetland scientist, this is, those are so vastly different that I, I'm comfortable saying that this wetland can absorb a little bit more punishment from this very small property, knowing that further, you know, any, anybody else in the area that wants to impinge on the wetlands is going to have to come before the zoning board for a variance. So, it's, it's not just open season on that wetland.
May I also add that, the, the water that goes into the lake, that goes right into the lake, and that's right into Lebanon's drinking water, whereas the water here percolates again, percolates and, and goes-
And I didn't mean to start a comparison between the two cases.
Somewhere, no, I think, I think you make a really important point.
But I think when somebody brings wetlands to this board, whether they bring a stream, whether they bring a lake, or whatever, our antennas will obviously have to go up.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And in this case, I think it's reasonable to, if we could, and I, I think you're coaching that we can't, if I could say, could you go back to your client and guess them?
We have done conditions in the past, years in the past. But what we're hearing from the lawyers and from the NHMA is, those are risky.
Those are what?
Risky.
Risky?
They're unlikely to be enforceable in law. And if you want to impose them, if you want to try to do them, they have to be in the, the statement of decision. So, they have to be in your motion, and then the whole motion and all the conditions has to be on your notice of decision.
Well, in that case, I'll be voting against this, and I would encourage everybody else to as well. And hopefully, the applicant would come back with some changes.
If I may?
You can make changes here if you want.
Yeah, well, we can do that, but by putting it as a condition, the notice of decision is what allows them to then go seek a building permit. So, the building inspector is going to have the zoning board's notice of decision, which is going to say the condition is to treat the runoff from the roof with a small detention basin in the gutter.
I think that's the lawyer's-
So, it seems, seems pretty, and so if they don't do that, then the building inspector isn't going to give them their certificate of, of use. If they don't follow through, it seems, it seems like you're pretty well protected with this one.
I think that's the lawyer's point about putting it into the, the notice of decisions, making sure that any conditions are in there, as well as in the motion so that it goes into the-
And that's going to be an inherent piece of the building application, the building permit application.
We have, we have not done it well in the past where we, we haven't put it in there. And they've said, you got to be careful about conditions.
Seems like it's pretty well protected in this, in this, something like this. It's really just an addition to what I've presented, that we'll just be in writing instead of on the plan.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm happy commending the motion so that we have that condition on there. And I want to point out, Dan, you're absolutely right. This wetland should be a, a big flag. And comparing, comparing to other hearings, this one, and I, I always go back to the, to the one in, I think it was the 80s, that went to the Supreme Court about the, the water heater enclosure. There was somebody on the lake, I can't remember the name of the, of the case, but-
Maureen Bacon?
Yeah.
I was just reading it before.
Yeah.
Rose one?
You, you gotta, you gotta compare it, so you have some, I mean, you can't, you can't take those as precedent, but they can help you understand situations and the, and the differences in the land and the areas. So, I think you're, I think, yeah, that's, that's legit.
Correct.
Not to beat that stick, that horse anymore.
Beat that stick with a horse.
It's not a very fair contest. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, does anybody think, where's our criteria? I don't think this would be, does anyone think this will be contrary to the public interest if we approve this variance?
No.
All right. Does anybody think the, the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed if we approved this variance?
You're talking about witness modification, right?
Yeah, so, we would, we would be, we would be modifying the-
Do we need to-
The motion to include the condition that-
A catch basin would be installed.
So, we need to redo the motion that we made was to, was to approve it as it is here. So, do we need a new motion to say that we vote to approve it with the modifications?
Yes.
To amend it?
Yes, so.
So, what do we want to ask for, Mr. Sandborn? What did you propose in, in concise language?
Oh, it's just a, a gutter with a downslope running into a three-foot, a three-foot, a three-foot stone box detention basin.
Did you capture that, Whitney?
That's, that's what DES commonly asks for in their shoreline buffer. It's very simple to construct, it's very effective. And I think that'll adjust the concerns that the board has with the potential impact to the wetland.
So, I just wanted on the record that I'm willing to accept that from the applicant because I have a long experience with him as a-
Professional.
Professional before this board. I haven't seen him mislead us ever.
No, you can, you can go right to the DES website-
Yes.
And you'll find the information on this, so.
Well, he's a great musician.
He is a great musician, right? All right, is everybody happy with the wording of that condition?
My, my wife, my bad.
And so, should I make a, a motion, an emotion?
I don't think we have to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, when it's time to call a question, I'll, I'll read it out with them.
Okay.
And then we can agree, yeah, that's, that's right or not.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, spirit of the ordinance is observed. Yeah, my concerns about that, we're protecting the wetland, and I think in this case, we're not going to hurt the wetlands. Substantial justice is done against, again, the, the balancing act, public good versus the property owner's rights. Anybody, you have anything to say about that? Values of the surrounding property are not diminished. Is this going to hurt anybody's property values to put this in?
Can't see that it would, seeing there was already a garage there before anyway. It was tumble down and dangerous.
Yeah, we heard from the other, and you didn't have any concerns.
Right. Uh, number five is literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. In my mind, the key here is unnecessary. So, I think we're covered. Does anybody have anything to say against that?
No.
All right, so the question before us is, shall we vote to approve the variance request before us with the condition that gutters and down, gutters and a downslope be installed to direct water from the roofs into a three-foot by three-foot by three-foot catch basin filled with stone?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, you have your variance.
Thank you very much, and I'm welcome, sure, my clients will. Thank you very much.
How's that catch basin rain?
Pardon me?
How's that catch basin rain on what?
It's just percolates into the surrounding soil. What it does is it keeps the water from being focused into a water course.
So, that stone goes in the, not a concrete?
No, it, you just, just in earth, and just in, you can dig it with a shovel.
Yep.
And you just dig a hole, you throw stone in it. It's like, you know, it's sort of like, it's like a little dry well, basically.
Is it to prevent the water from running off the surface?
It's, uh, sort of two purposes. It, it prevents the water from running along the surface of the ground. It also provides filtration so that your contaminants that come off of the roof.
That's what I need for my rule. I just realized, I've had a problem forever, and I've never been quite sure how to solve it, but that would, that would solve it.
Yeah, and, I mean, people use the, the rain barrels. Or is a similar method of treating roof runoff.
Right.
The difference is you're actually collecting it for specific use.
You can see two or three examples of that in the new Muscoma West side park, park.
Of the three-foot by three-foot?
The drains go down into a, into a catch basin.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a very, very powerful.
I have to go up there tomorrow, I'll have a look, recommend it. Appreciate that, so.
All right.
So, it serves multiple purposes, all benefiting the surrounding area.
I learned afterwards, it's, it's pretty almost $200, that paddle. I don't expect it to be returned.
So, I appreciate the time, and I thought of consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sandborn.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, approval of the minutes.
I have a few, a few.
Before you guys start, let me just say first that we're going to move Seeley and Bob from guests up into zoning board members, and they will be listed with the zoning board members with alternate behind their names.
Good, okay, that's, that's important. Line 109, you got an equal sign in rehearing.
I like that. It's inventive.
Uh, lines 200 and 202, should teams be capitalized?
Yes.
Since it's the name of the software. Oh, there's, on line 178, because I don't know what it should say. It says, Ms. Afiero, as a member of the public, said that she deplores all ZBA members to go get training.
You mean in-.
I don't think deplores is correct.
She did say deplores.
Yeah, she agrees.
She said we would deplore them.
Right.
There's a piece missing there.
178.
178.
I was a little down on 278.
Maybe she encourages it instead of deplores.
Seeley has a question or a comment on the, on the minutes, perhaps? Seeley, you can unmute yourself, and then we can hear you.
Hear me out?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to bring up two things. Of course, I've been listening and everything, and I wanted to say on the, you brought it up, I think Dan did, brought it up earlier about the cumulonimbus effect on the lakes. Like, your first hearing?
Yeah.
But that, that, we went to court on that one. That's the Bacon case, and we won it because he wanted to put a piece on his house. I just wanted to talk about that, to let you know that's going on. And then on the second case, I just wondered about the, the zoning ordinance has section 413, which is all about conforming and non-conforming lots. And it talks about if someone demolishes a building or it burns down, they have a year to rebuild it. It, it's like five sections to it, but it's, it's interesting how it's what they want with it. So, I guess this is after the fact, but for, just for knowledge, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, that's all.
Okay.
I have some more comments.
It was very good, you guys, I liked it. It was very good, you guys, I liked it. Did a good job.
Thanks.
You implored us, Ceeley, so we're, you implored us, yes.
Ceeley.
I know.
Lines 245, 6 and 7 are incomprehensible.
Said that she implores all ZBA members to go get training and respectfully not.
Yeah, 178 would say implores, but 245, 246, 247.
Oh, give us a second to read it.
This is a note for me to go back and check that I forgot to highlight.
With one, he had one hour and nine minutes?
Yeah, that's, that's a personal note.
Oh, okay.
And then I have to go back and check the recording for.
I had.
That's when it was, right?
One hour and nine minutes.
Listen to it.
Yeah, I just forgot to highlight it.
That's all the comments, that, that's all the things that I found, you do a beautiful job, Whitney, I'm so impressed.
So Whitney, I have two other things, one is in line 16, should that be V period Stinson?
Oh, yeah, that's how it came up.
Just is in V Stinson, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know whether, and then on page, sorry, line 72, it says, Mrs. Vis Johnson said that the board facing part of their, okay, the boards, it should probably be the board possessed it, facing part of their decision on anticipating no impact.
Yes.
Does that make?
Board, board possessed.
Oh, that's right, there should be an apostrophe after board, the last word in line 71.
Get it? Interesting construction.
No, with the gerund, that's how you do it.
Yeah.
I know. I mean, I agree.
Yeah, I like you.
It is an interesting construction that we don't see.
You did a beautiful job. We are so fortunate.
Oh, I am reminded reading this that we should mention for both of the hearings that we did not see alternates.
And I probably ought to tell everybody that on May 14.
Make sure that's clear.
We'll change counsel to counsel.
Great, thank you.
It said, it's.
All right, any general public comment?
Do you guys need to vote?
Can have three minutes each.
Vote a minute.
Oh, if there's no objection, we'll take the minutes, it's approved.
Yes.
Approved as, as amended.
Corrected.
On May 14, where she said.
Any public comment on any topic whatsoever, you can have three minutes, speak your mind on anything.
Really interesting being here and watching the process and how you, what you discussed and what you considered and how thoroughly you went over everything. I appreciate that a lot, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. St. Martin?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I think, I thought we're done.
Okay.
We're re-journeying in about 8:53.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Ceeley.
Thank you.
I just said that.
Oh, I thought you said nine.